Okay, so, thank you, we're gonna call the general session, open session of the school committee meeting of January 18th, 2018 to order, get back to order from our executive session and begin with a pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Just a reminder, this meeting's being recorded, please silence your mobile devices and what have you. And we will start with any public comment, which I do not see any public so far. And then we would like to move right to Leah McCarron with our student report.
Hey guys, just a couple of check-ins. Last week, we had our DECA competition where groups of teams went and proposed business ideas and we had a bunch of teams move on to the state level competition, which meant they were in the top ten teams. Today, we had our chorus concert that was originally pre-Christmas but was moved to yesterday and then got pushed to today. But we had a guest conductor from Uruguay, I believe, who came in and worked with the chorus kids and it was a really cool performance to see. And I think it went really well, I think most people really enjoyed it.
I think they're also performing as we speak.
Yeah, at seven o'clock, they were starting for the public and parents and such.
Right.
And what time are they going to be there?
I think it's a long ride.
I thought it was almost tonight, yeah. We're hoping to, I'd like to try to see part of it.
Yeah. And then there's also basketball game tonight at seven, so lots of things going on. Sports overall are going pretty well. Some teams are finishing up going into their leagues and states and championships. And then we have a robotics competition coming up on the 27th. That's also what I got.
Fantastic.
Alright.
There's a lot going on at the high school, so if we get on quick, we'll know where we're headed.
Yeah.
You said 27th of January?
January, yeah.
Are you excited about the seminar?
I was, yeah.
We got one more, we got one more.
You think so?
We got one more before we have to go to a Monday, that's what I'm saying.
We have, we have a bank that-
We have, currently, the last day of school is on a Thursday. And so, we can do Friday, even though it's the sixth day. We have to go to Thursday right now.
Oh, I thought the last day of school was, we already teed it up for the Friday, the 22nd.
No, it's the 21st.
The Thursday, the 21st.
Yep.
So the next one will take us to the 22nd.
The second. So, we just don't want to get to the 25th.
Correct.
Yeah, that's-
So, it can only have one more snow day.
Doesn't really affect me, no.
I'll take anything I can get.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Tone down that grin, right?
They push AP exams, that's the thing, we don't, those don't move, so every day we lose-
Right, that's the challenge.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
We gotta, so every day, we lose, we lose a day of learning in class, basically.
For AP exams.
Yeah.
And do I understand correctly that this trimester's been extended a little bit?
Is, I think it's supposed to be moved to the next week now.
That's right, so it's-
Because of the days.
Which is, then it's after relay for life is the exams rather than before, I heard that.
Yeah.
That's a bummer.
Which is also Mr. North Andover, the day before, yeah. There's a lot of stuff going on. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next for, in our consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes from last week's meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2018 meeting as presented in the packet.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Vitski Lynch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Great, thank you. So, for Chair's report, key thing is many of us, along with some of our selectmen and other town manager or town staff, attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce Managers and Mayors Breakfast last Friday, which was a really, I thought it was a really, I was impressed by the event, particularly the group of leaders who spoke, all the managers and mayors from our neighboring Merrimack Valley towns. And what impressed me was the real camaraderie and support that they all show for each other and talk to the businesses about the fact that they are employing and working to better the Merrimack Valley as a whole, not just the town in which they are established. And I thought Mr. Mailer's comments about the true collaboration between the school committee, the selectmen, his collaboration with Dr. Price, he really went on and on about how great all that was and how different and special that is. And I thought that that was very excellent, so I enjoyed participating in that. That was, that's my big update.
So, I have two updates. The first is, on Monday, I tweeted out about it, we had an amazing experience with the Lawrence Public Schools, very much thanks to Mr. Gilligan who facilitated this. But I, I got to go and watch Celtics practice in their facility in Waltham along with thirty of our students from NAMs. And part of that was, we developed a playbook, which we're gonna, which really helps kids deal with difficult situations. So, I actually have the playbook and maybe, and it's actually got autographed by Jalen Brown and Baines, and it was really fun. The highlight for me was definitely, well, I have to say, watching the practice was amazing because I was watching the coaches and, you know, Brad Stevens is incredibly impressive. You know, he had an hour of practice and he did not waste a second. And he said, "Look, you know, these guys play a lot of games and I don't," he said to the kids, "these kids, these guys play a lot of games and right now, I need to keep them fresh, so I'm only gonna do an hour of practice, so every minute is gonna be important." So, it was just incredibly well-structured lesson. I know I'm a teacher at heart, right, but, you know, breaking up the coaches, "Vig's down there, Guards up here," you know, "this is what we're gonna do," and just the finer points that they were really focusing on. And then we created this playbook, it's actually available online and we'll tweet out the link, but it's definitely scenarios that our students and the students from Lawrence, the Weatherby Middle School, and they created scenarios and they said, "Okay, so you're gonna get into the scenario where someone says something inappropriate, or racist, or homophobic, or unfair to girls, or boys, or," and how, what would you do? So, for each situation, they give the situation, they give questions to have a conversation about it, and then they give proposed interventions, what kids could do. And it's really cool, if you look at it, it looks like a playbook, right? And it was really fun. So, the kids got to go through some of these scenarios with some of the Celtics players. So, pictures of like Jalen Brown and Baines down on the ground. And then, the highlight for me actually was, we played a massive rock-paper-scissors tournament, which was really fun. And in the end, a young lady from the Weatherby was going up against Jalen Brown on what, rock-paper-scissors. And then what the deal was, I don't know if you've ever done this before, I had never, is if you lost, you had to become that person's biggest cheering section. So, we had half of the gym cheering for Jalen Brown and half of the gym cheering for this other young lady. And it was just a fun event and an amazing once-in-a-lifetime experience. No one gets to go into the Celtics practices, you know, there was no media, there was no one else except us. And, you know, no phones, no nothing, but it was really fun to watch. It was a wonderful experience for our kids. And it was wonderful to partner with Lawrence on this. You know, I think we need to do more and more of that. And I know that's been something Mr. Gilligan has been focused on, and I think you're uniquely positioned to continue that partnership, Mr. Gilligan. So, I'm excited.
And the Celtics are actually coming back to the middle school a little more time?
Yes.
To our middle school.
With the Weatherby kids.
With the Weatherby kids as well.
Yeah, it's been awesome, really, really exciting. And then I have some, so yesterday, we've been doing a lot of snow challenges. For anyone out there, if you have an idea for an upcoming snow challenge, I'm sort of running out slow, so if anyone's got one. But yesterday was, "If you were superintendent for a day, what would you do?" So, I have some fun ones, if you, a little humor, if you're, and some good ones, I thought I, if you don't mind. So, this is from Seamus Keegan, who is a kindergartner sergeant. "If I were superintendent for the day, I would make an invention for seats with belts so kids cannot get out of their seats. The teacher would have a computer to control the belts to allow the students to get up after they complete their work." This is from- I don't know.
Sounds like my house.
Yeah, there we go. I thought that was, alright. This is from Elle Gordon, who's a fourth grader in Ms. Gil Martin's class at Thompson School. Her suggestion, which I thought was incredibly thoughtful, was to eliminate twin day. She said that sometimes, if a kid doesn't have a twin, they feel sad and left out. Kids may have a twin because they don't have the courage to ask a friend, or also sometimes, kids have to choose between one friend over another. And, you know, I do know that actually, Mrs. Gil Martin's class this year, she told all the kids to dress the same so they were all twins. And it's, I thought that was a very thoughtful, so, here's, I would, if I were superintendent for a day, I would have a little pet, like a turtle, frog, snake, hermit crab in each classroom. What would be really cute would be a dwarf hamster. If I were superintendent for a day, oh, that way the way was Carol Paints, I don't know who, no, sorry, Ava Loomer, grade seven. This is Anna Lyons in grade eight at the middle school. If she was superintendent for a day, she would have a therapy dog come to schools once a month or every other week. I was at my mother's school this snow day where I learned, every other Wednesday, they have a therapy dog come to school, and I thought it was really a great benefit for kids. Rose Gordon in sixth grade, "If I was superintendent for a day, I would require that all North Andover students start to learn a second language in elementary school." And Emma Kowalski, a, Emma Kowalski, if I were super, so, fourth grade at Franklin, "If I were superintendent of schools in North Andover for a day, I would create a buddy program for middle and elementary school students so that all middle and elementary school students could connect with each other to learn social skills." And this is one of my favorites. We had a number of other things. I will tell you, a lot of kids talked about a late start time. Of course, we had some conversations about how they would change the food, bathrooms. And one kid wrote me a very long essay about how we should have recess at the high school. And this one was great. It started out just, I would have air conditioning in all of the North Andover public schools, but there was a line that I really liked. Because one of the things we asked the kids was to give reasons, to go into depth about the reasons. If we had AC, it would smell better, because the hotter it is, the more we sweat, and the more we sweat, the more stinky it gets. So, it was a fun, I, I actually, Mr. Gilligan and I are excited because he is gonna use these essays as part of his entry process. So, here you go, Mr. Gilligan. I got to read them, now you get to code them and figure out how to, what you're gonna do in terms of your entry process, so.
It's a little early, but it's a great baseline on student data.
It's a great baseline to hear what students have to say. And I thought it was a great, it was a great thing, and I really appreciate all the kids who took the opportunity to, to write about what they would do. And a number of parents said to me that they really, the kids really enjoyed it, so.
Very good.
Sort of fun. Yeah, that's okay. And some people just had conversations about it at the dinner table, which is awesome. So, there you go. That's my superintendent's report.
Very nice, thank you.
Can we add seatbelts into the budget for the new-
That might-
That's a great transition.
Present some interesting challenges. Do we have any updates, Mr. Trissey?
Yes, we're gonna get seatbelts in this. Done deal now.
If you have anything to say about that, you might want to contact Mr. Trissey and ask him to comment about that.
Not much of an update, we haven't met, we obviously gave you an update last week. We do plan on appearing in front of the board of selectmen, I think possibly this week or the following week, to give them a little update and also request a waiver of some of the permit fees that are associated with the building. So, that should be happening in the next week or two. I just wanted to, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, just dovetail on the point you made about the camaraderie, as well as what superintendent talked about, the relationship with Lawrence Schools. I mean, it really warms my heart to hear those kind of things. You know, I represented, one of the state rep, my district was half Lawrence, half North Andover. To see the collaboration, especially with the schools, it's a, it's a great thing. And I think we should all say congratulations in which Jeff Riley, best of luck, he's been named a finalist for commissioner of elementary and secondary education. So, I'm really hopeful that he gets that job, and I think he'd be a strong advocate for, for all our schools.
Agreed. Thank you. Now, we're on to old business, old, old new business. So, I'm happy to announce that we have come to an agreement and have a contract here with Mr. Greg Gilligan for his superintendentcy starting July 1st, 2018. And we thought it'd be fun if we all signed it. We all approved it and voted yes moments ago. And if you would like to sign it, Mr. Gilligan, I'd be happy to do that as well.
Somebody come up there and sign it?
I think that'd be great.
Can you tweet it out?
Sure.
Yeah, get the photo going.
Can you get a photo?
Jim's got it, Jim's on it.
Yeah, send it to me, Jim.
If it's on Twitter, it's unofficial.
Is black required?
Usually speaking, black is required.
I thought so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Usually speaking. I know it doesn't have marriage licenses. As it just, you should know that too, Mr. Gilligan.
Yes, it is.
Don't we all? Alright.
Everybody should come over, come on, everybody come over. Which is leaving me young.
Come on, Holly.
Jen, right away. Alright, hold on. I'm ready, but we're all like sitting there like, nah, we're all good, we're sitting here, come on. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Boys on the left, girls on the right.
My Twitter following's at an all-time high, so this will go up to-
Well, with the snow.
Congratulations, Mr. Gilligan.
Thank you.
Very good.
He didn't have a change in the makeup.
I haven't even decided, because I did.
Yes, he did, I showed him. I showed him that. Alright, thank you.
I just want to say, thank you, I'm thrilled and I'm completely honored to have the privilege to lead this district after dark, the price departs June 30th, and I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you for everything.
You're welcome, thank you. And now, on to more things about government, Washington DC trip for the American Thought Class. Second reading, yeah, we didn't have any questions about the specific trip last time, so I'm not preparing, didn't prepare anything to get back to you on.
So, I will move to approve, as presented in the packet, the overnight trip to Washington DC.
Second. Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Vitski Lynch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Great opportunity.
Yes, it is. And then, discussion about budget. Yeah, so, I did prepare one thing for you that I think Mr. Mailer will bring up, but I have a copy of it here for you. So, just a conversation I, coming off of Tim's comments last week, I thought it would, it would behoove us to take a moment to look at the class sizes and over the goal. Tim Scherhards.
Oh, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Yeah, Chair of the Finance Committee. So, I just, I did some analysis yesterday during the snow day, and really kind of looked at what would be, if we were gonna get to zero classes at above our class size, above, zero classes above the class size guidelines, what it would take. So, as of right now, with the FY19 budget, we're gonna be at seventeen percent. And each of those lines represents if we added an additional teacher. So, I, for a total, it would actually take us a hundred classrooms at the elementary level. Next year's budget is ninety-four, so it's an additional six. So, if you go over to the next one, that takes, that really is, is the best look. I just wanted to remind us, we started in the fifties, so we have made progress. But you can see, for next year, the FY19 budget is proposing us to get to seventeen point oh-two percent. And then you can see each additional teacher and what that would get us. Does that, does that make sense? So, we're looking at, if we wanted, if we wanted to be for next year at zero classes above the school committee guidelines, we would need six additional teachers. And I, I think that's useful for another, a number of reasons. So, that's about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so obviously not doable within the constraints of the budget that we have presented. But I also think it gives a roadmap to you, Mr. Gilligan, about where, how much longer it's gonna take to get there. And I think you and I both agree, it's probably a two-year process to get there and to do the six. Now, that's assuming that, you know, things don't change dramatically. But, you know, we're not in a place at the elementary where we're locked with a thing, you're gonna need twenty more teachers to get there. We really are within six teachers of this time of getting to within the guidelines. And we looked, and, you know, again, this is an exercise. We looked at what those class sizes look like for each, each school and each grade, and, you know, they're much more in line with what most districts look like once you get there, right? So, with six more teachers, in a, in hopefully, I would hope, by FY21, you know, you're, it's gonna be a thing where elementary class sizes are very, very similar to what other districts look like. And I, and I don't think we'll be lagging behind as we have been in this, on this area. So, I just did the analysis, I think the FinCom wanted us to do this analysis, and I thought I would just present it to you as part of it. It is not my proposal that we add the six teachers, but I thought I would just tell you what that looks like. If that makes sense, I thought it'd be helpful.
I think what's interesting about it is, I mean, we've, we've talked about these numbers for so many years, and, you know, the challenge has always been, great, we'll hire a new teacher, where do we put them, right? I mean, we already have teachers who are, you know, in classrooms that are small, et cetera. Next year, we'll have, hopefully, things go well, weather goes well, right? The building opens on time, and we have fifteen classes that now give us the opportunity to do this. So, I'm not sure that this is, you know, that far away-
It's not that far away.
-for us doing this. And as I see developments in town kind of growing, I see the opportunity, you know, for, for those to get absorbed into other places, you know, so we're not, you know, back in the cycle in four years saying, "Okay, great, you know, we hit the, we hit our goal for three years or two years, right, and now we're back up to forty percent." We have significant room to put students in our, in our classes.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you remember, when we looked at doing the K, we also looked at adding classrooms to-
Right.
Kittredge, Franklin, and Atkinson, if at the time, you need to do that, right? Because, you know, maybe you just need to replace the modulars, the portables at Franklin, but maybe you need to add a few classrooms.
Right.
Maybe you just need to replace the portables at Atkinson, but maybe you need to add a few classrooms. So, this isn't even, the fifteen classrooms doesn't have to be the final stop-
Correct.
-if the town needs additional space. So, even if, you know, even if the town grows at a rate we don't expect, you're still gonna have the ability to add back classrooms.
Right.
So, you know, I think the compilation of the K plus the renovations of those other spaces. Now, if you don't need those classrooms, then you can, as we talked about, use the funds to renovate the schools on program increase, you know, make the libraries better, make the-
Right, of course.
So, it's, yeah. So, again, it feels like a veritable goal, even within the con, you know, the confines of a three and a half to four percent increase. I think you can get there within the next few years. And, you know, if other things change around the finances within the community, it might be quicker. If other things change within the foundation budget review at the state, it might be quicker. If the trend that we're seeing continues to, continues with the reduction in out-of-district costs, it might be quicker. So, I think there are ways that this may accelerate. And even if it doesn't, this is an attainable goal for you guys within the next few years. We're not that far off. What strikes me about this is, it's only one more teacher and we meet our fifteen percent goal, we beat our fifteen percent goal that we set. Right. Now, the other thing is, it always changes. So, when I did this a few weeks ago, it was fifteen point four percent, but then one more, we got a few more kids at one school that flipped it over. So, I mean, that's the other thing, is like, literally, when I presented this to you by, on January 4th, it's different than what I'm presenting tonight. Just because if two more, if one or two more kids moves in at the particular school. So, you know, it's always, it's a moving target, but it's an attainable target.
And our, our empty classrooms, because we've taken the kindergartens out, are spread throughout the district-
Correct.
-so that we can very easily meet the needs where they exist.
Absolutely. And that was the beauty of the K building, is that by doing the K building, we impacted all five elementary schools, as we talked about. If we had renovated one school, we would have impacted, moved kids, changed neighborhoods, the K just, and the other thing is, you know, we got a question today at the PTO co-presidents, "Okay, so you're not gonna backfill any of those fifteen classrooms." I would be stunned if not, if most of those classrooms weren't used next year. So, if you think about a number of our elementary school classrooms, we have special education happening in very small spaces. We have art on a cart, we have music happening at the same spaces as the libraries. We have libraries that are in places that really aren't libraries. We, you know, there, so there's a lot of, we have EL happening in hallways. I mean, so, there are things that will quickly move into those spaces. And so, I don't envision, you know, empty classrooms. I envision reuse of those classrooms. And if you remember, also this year, we have really pushed in with those additional teachers we added last year.
Right.
All of the principals did it, knowing it was a one-year deal. Some of what we're doing right now in our schools is really not sustainable, in terms of using those spaces. So, but for one year, everyone was willing to do it. So, you know, I don't foresee vast empty classrooms next year in many, if any, of our schools.
Gives us some breathing room to provide the services until we backfill them.
Yeah.
Right.
So, anyways, I just thought this analysis was helpful. I, I just didn't know how far we were, so.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
No, it's good, thank you.
So, that's all my additional presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have it about what I presented last week. And if not, if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions, there's, you know, I feel like I've been, because of my position on the School Building Committee, I've known this is coming. I mean, obviously, almost all the increases is geared to opening that building. And I think, you know, I've heard it, you know, three, four, five times a month from you, and, you know, so I didn't find any surprises in this, and, you know, I've agreed with your recommendation to go forward, so I plan on fully supporting this budget.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'd say, you know, the, the difficult thing is probably, I can't even remember, I'm gonna say probably three, four years ago, I mean, we would have people come into a budget presentation meeting and we would leave and we'd get angry phone calls and complaints and criticism, suggestions, "How could you, you know, rank, rank something above something else?" You know, we used to do it, which I thought at the time was, you know, it was helpful, right? "Here's how much money we have and here's what we're able to do," and then there's below the line, right? So, if only we had this much more money, right, we would put that in there. And I think that that, for some, some people, I think it probably angered them, right? Like, like it impacted their, their children or, you know, whoever, and that's where we drew the line. Like, that, that was, you know, the literal, personal line in the sand. I haven't heard anything about this. And so, I don't, I don't-
Did you hear that?
I just heard the door. But I mean that in a really good complimentary way. Like, I think people are just looking at it, if they're having questions or concerns, like, it's thought through, they understand the process that, that you've gone through, the presentations, I think you presented to the teachers, I haven't heard anything, you know, from, from faculty or staff. And so, it's a refreshing change to kind of go through this. And so, hopefully, what I am envisioning is that you have mentored Mr. Gilligan on, on this. And so, next year, we're in a room full of us and not necessarily the public who's angry about something that's happening. So, just thank you for all the work that not only you have done, but the staff has done as well to make this a smooth, transparent, and seamless process.
Can we put your cellphone up on the screen in case people do want to put your cellphone up?
Sure, go right ahead.
People do have-
Right at the bottom. I think it's on the line.
I also, I think, you know, Mr. Mailer was incredibly important in this process of finding some creative ways to bring down some of our level services, as we talked about last week, and, and really not having this, you know, and through some iterations, we were gonna maybe have to take a, a one-through-five classroom teacher to make this work. And the reality is, we didn't have to do that. And so, we're not having to pit one against the other. One question we did have this morning is, you know, "Well, then why don't we know what you haven't been able to do?" And I really tried to have the Looking Forward section of the executive summary talk about, like, these are the other things. It's, it's not that we're not, we're ignoring them, but we're also really thinking about what is ahead. As with these elementary classrooms, we're not adding at this point, it's pretty clear, but at the same time, we're not that far off. So, you know, hopefully, we've struck a balance between those things.
Actually, related to the question this morning, I just wanted to ask, on the proposed increases, the screen where you have school nurse, point five, et cetera, none of these adds are being achieved by taking away from here else.
No, those are all increases.
There are no, we had to remove X from here in order to go here.
And today, as you know, with the PTOs, you know, one of the points I kept making was like, "Look, you know, we're adding these, and in essence, we're adding to all the elementary schools because we're reducing counselor load, we're reducing nurses." Like, so this is not just about an ECC add, it's actually about adding to all of our schools K to five.
That's what the plan's been from day one. I mean, this is not necessarily just kindergarten plan, it's a, it's a class size reduction plan at the elementary level.
And a space creation.
Yeah, a space creation.
And now, it's a student services reduction plan too, which I think is important.
And we're not done, obviously. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, working with the new superintendent, next year, we're gonna try to back those on those classrooms.
Yes. And now, we can.
Yep.
Well, I really, I think the Looking Forward section's really important because while it doesn't have necessarily financials attached to it, it has areas that we are thinking about, we're not thinking about them because our hair's on fire, it's because we are being thoughtful and planning forward. Would you, or is it inappropriate to add this that you just gave us to the, looking forward, this little six teacher chart? I think that would be worth dropping in.
Yep, I can do that for my presentation too.
Because you already have the other chart right here.
You know, I plan to have that for my presentation for the FinCom.
Great, that's okay. Because while it, it actually, that does attach some financials, it still talks about, you know, it's gonna take us a little bit of time, and we're aware of that.
Yes.
And we've thought about that. Good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all for this exciting work. Do we need to vote to approve this?
No.
Next week, next week, that's right, that's right, we have the public hearing next week.
All the people that Andrew decided to come here.
Yes, yes.
However, they come here, then we vote.
Yes. No, that's good.
That's right.
Well, I'd rather have people come than have people say afterward that they weren't paying attention, so.
Agreed, yep.
I'm in the public domain for what, three weeks now?
Yep.
Three weeks in total, so.
The public domain for what, three weeks now, three weeks in total, so.
So, that's great. So, thank you. Um, no new business. Anybody have any other announcements or commentary that they'd like to make, so I don't forget that?
I'll just make a, uh, announcement, I guess. Uh, I have submitted my nomination papers for school committee for the March twenty-seventh election, and they've been certified by the town clerk.
Congratulations.
You're gonna jinx us again, though.
No, appropriate to announce.
I have as well, sorry.
Excellent, thank you both. Any other news to share?
I will move to return to executive session for the purpose of discussing the custodian association.
Motion by Ms. Witski Lynch, second by Mr. McDevitt. Mr. Trissy?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all very much. Go off to the concert, if you can.